Okay, the light is on and good evening everyone and welcome. And I guess we survived the storm. So that was quite a lot of wind and rain. So welcome and would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
(Inaudible)
Allison, could we get a roll call please? Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Rich Kellum.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Conopa. Here. And Counselor Kellum was going to be late, so he had to lost power at his place and had a lot of rain that came down, did a little bit of flooding. So, okay. With that, Mr. Ed Hodney. So you weren't thinking that you were going to be able to get by with your...
Point of order?
No, we just have a special presentation, Bernadette. Yeah. You didn't think you were going to get by without having a little send-away, did you, at our council meeting?
Yes.
He knows me well enough. Would you like to come forward here?
So, Ed Hodney's been our Parks and Recreation since July 1st, 2003, and he's retiring. So we are engrafting this and he has done some great stuff in our Parks and Rec, you know, program and also our request for a year festival, the way that has grown, I credit him. He was one that said, "We can build this festival up. We can make it a lot bigger." And boy, did he ever do it. We've met down that path many times. So, in recognition of 30 years of leadership, integrity, and dedication to public service, including 16 years with Albany Parks and Recreation, Ed helped Albany's summer events to grow and thrive, secured precious natural open spaces, and elevated public art, all which will serve residents and visitors for generations to come. Ed Hodney, Parks and Recreation Director, July 1st, 2003 to June 30, 2019.
And besides that, Ed has been such a joy to work with. And I can, I know everyone that has worked with him with the city have just really enjoyed him. And he is going to be engrafting this. And he's promised me he's going to still stay around and be involved and we're not going to let you leave us fully, Ed. So, but no, thank you. Okay. First, we have three public hearings.
Point of order, Mayor? I object to the inclusion of Item 4B, Report Proposed Demolition, on today's agenda. The city failed to provide a complete copy of the report at least seven days in advance of this hearing as specified by ORS 197.7634B. Additional materials were added to the agenda only 48 hours before this meeting after we informed the city on Monday, not on the city's own impetus. A quick review of the record today indicates some materials are still missing. The record is still incomplete. Since the City Council is under no obligation to make a decision in this matter tonight, I request that the report and decision are deferred until such time as these admissions are corrected and the city is prepared. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bernadette. And we will discuss that when we get to that Item B and our city attorney will give a couple of options that the council can have for this evening.
My order, Mayor?
Yeah, uh-huh. We don't want to turn this into a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing. This is strictly on procedure.
Uh-huh.
I object to schedule Business 4B on tonight's agenda. My name's Cameron Sotomayor, 23007th Avenue, Southwest. The proceeding tonight unfairly prejudices my right to a fair hearing on Land Use File HI-1218, staffs recommending a final decision on HI-1218 based on the record and without Kellum's participation. On page 221 of tonight's agenda packet containing the October 10 meeting minutes, it says, Cameron Sotomayor, 2307th Avenue, Southwest, handed out a spreadsheet with market value analysis, see agenda file. He read a statement to the record and referred to pictures of 2307th Avenue, Southwest, and 627 Fifth Avenue, Southeast, see agenda file. My written testimony, my spreadsheet, and my pictures are all part of the record presented to Luba, but have been prejudicially removed from the record presented in tonight's agenda packet. A decision based on the record cannot be made on an incomplete record. Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals ordered in their decision, "We do not know whether and to what extent Kellum's participation influenced the vote of the City Council. Therefore, remand is appropriate to allow the council to consider the application without Kellum's participation." That is from a direct quote from page 11 of the Luba decision on Land Use File HI-1218. You cannot make a decision without Kellum's participation based on a record that has Kellum's participation and biased influence all over it. In particular, Kellum's participation interfered with citizen testimony as evidenced in the October 10 meeting minutes on pages 218 and 220. I demand a full, open record hearing without biased participation of Kellum. The council is not following ORS 197.763, notification standards for Land Use File HI-1218. The scheduled business report on the proposed demolition does not follow the notification requirements for a quasi-judicial proceeding on remand from Luba. The first assignment of air from Luba was upheld, and in their decision on page 13, it states, and I quote directly, "The city's one-page decision does not set out the applicable criteria or contain any findings or conclusions. When Luba remands a decision on the basis that a local government failed to identify applicable standards, ORS 197.763 is applicable to the local proceedings. And local government is required to follow, is required to provide notice identifying the relevant standards, conduct an evidentiary hearing, and allow petitioner to present evidence and argument concerning the applicability or proper interpretation of identified standards." And that's from the Luba decision, Warren versus City of Aurora. When Luba remands a decision, the jurisdiction must remain under the relevant remand requirements. For HI-1218, this means proper notification and proceedings, a complete record, and a de novo hearing without the biased input or interference from Kellum.
So that actually is kind of crossing over the line, though, on testimony. So we will not have any more on this till we get to this item on that. Okay? Thank you, Cameron.
I might point out, in terms of people yelling out point of order and speaking, you're not following Robert's Rules of Order. In fact, it should have been brought up when this issue was first discussed. And furthermore, if those types of things continue to be brought up, the mayor is required to make a decision as to if it is accurate or not. If you're accurate, we should not continue. If you're not accurate, then we can continue on that subject. So I would request that the mayor follow Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay. So right now, we do have three public hearings. And I will open up the first one at 7:25 PM. This is adopting the 2018-2019 supplemental budget. And counsel, this starts on page three and you've got a resolution on page five. And Gina, did you have any comments you'd like to make on it?
The only reason we have to have a public hearing is we have three funds that had appropriations increased by 10% or greater. All of those are, the two of the funds are increasing due to revenues received from the sale of Brandis property and subsequent transfer into, from the capital projects fund to the risk management fund is repayment for an inter-fund loan that occurred about eight, nine years ago. The other one is just a, the phase two of the apron improvement project at the airport. We, when we had counsel took, voted on that contract to accept it and we completed that work this year, but the FFA, FAA, I get that wrong, funds came in and so we just need to appropriate those. Those are really the only items, the reasons that we're having the public hearing.
Okay. Questions? All right. Counsel, what would you like to do with this item? There's a resolution starting on page five.
Do you need to close the public hearing related to this item or not?
Excuse me. Is there anyone that would like to speak on our supplemental budget? Okay, not anyone. I will close the public hearing at 7:27 PM.
I'll make a motion to adopt the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Second?
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Gina. And next, at the same time, 7:27 PM, I will open up a public hearing on adopting Parks and Recreation fees for the 2019-2021 fiscal year. This starts on page nine. And Mr. Ed Hodney, your last time you'll be coming up here doing your reports.
As a staff member.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, as the amendment indicates, just as a reminder, we ask the City Council to adopt a fee schedule for Parks and Recreation fees every year. And as we've discussed in previous years, it is our habit to review all of our fees leading up to the budget and make adjustments as we believe are appropriate or as we believe our market, our particular markets will bear. That's why you see, that's really loud, that's why you see some fees being increased while others are left in place for the current year. It is also a fact that if you go back in previous years, you'll see some of those fees adjusted in previous years that are not being adjusted this year. I know Bessie in particular will recognize that since she has always challenged me on aquatics fees in particular. So the same is the case this year. I do want to point out that the fees for the Maple Lawn Preschool have been increased this year as we discussed during the Budget Committee meetings as well. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Questions?
I have no questions. I just want to say I did look it over and I figured out this year, so thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the Parks and Recreation fees? Okay, not seeing anyone. I will close the public hearing at 7:29 PM. And counsel, what would you like to do with these items? There's a resolution that's actually on page 10.
I'll make a motion for adoption of a resolution relating to establishing the new Parks and Recreation fees.
A second.
Okay. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, now we have another public hearing. And this one's going to take a little bit longer here. So on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding text amendments to the Albany Development Code relating to floodplain development standards as described in Planning File DC-0119. The applicant is the City of Albany Community Development Department, Planning Division. I call to order this legislative public hearing at 7:30 PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the city clerk. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards. Staff will describe your other criteria in the Comprehensive Planner Development Code which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. At this time, I'll call for the staff report. It says Planner Melissa.
It does.
I don't see Melissa.
Yeah, Melissa's absent today, so I'm filling in for this report. Thank you. Good evening. David Martino, Planning Manager. The proposed text amendment to the Floodplain Development Code section of the, let me back up. The proposal is a text amendment to the Floodplain Development Code section of the Albany Development Code that eliminates the following review criterion under the heading "Grading, Fill, Excavation, and Paving" section of our code 6.111 Sub-Number 3. That current criterion states this, it says, "The proposal will not increase the existing velocity of flood flows so as to exceed the erosive velocity limits of soils in the flood area." So the review criteria for Development Code amendments are located in your packets and copies can be provided. Notice was provided to the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, April 24, 2019, and a notice of the public hearing was published in the Albany Democrat Herald on May 24, 2019. The staff report for this proposed amendment was posted on the city's website on May 24, 2019, at least seven days before the first evidentiary public hearing. At the time that the staff report was written, there was one individual that provided comments in support of the proposed text amendment. And the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed amendment, June 3, 2019. Testimony was received from Lee and Sue Cutsford of 831 Northwest Ritters Lane in opposition to the amendment. Mr. Cutsford felt that deleting this wording takes away the scientific component of the equation and that it was being driven by a developer and not the public. Community Development Director Jeff Blain explained that the review criterion was being removed because it requires a site-by-site analysis using tools and available data that are only applicable on a larger geographic scale. In other words, the analysis implies a level of accuracy that simply doesn't exist. And Jeff here is able to talk about the engineering side of this proposed amendment. And we're both here to answer your questions afterwards.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So I'll end up repeating a little bit of what David said. We're a little bit disjointed here with Melissa not being here today. And I'm going to go into a little bit more detail than I otherwise would based on the, some of the questions that were raised by the Cutsfords in the testimony of the Planning Commission and some of the statements that were made. I think there was some confusion and so I'm going to try to head that off by identifying some of the history in advance. Going to start, though, by reviewing some general floodplain-related items. The council doesn't have a lot of floodplain topics that come in front of you, so I'm going to cover some things that will dust off some cobwebs for you. FEMA has identified several floodplains throughout Albany on their flood insurance rate maps, call them FERMs. Floodplains are made of two parts, the floodway and the flood fringe. I have a drawing here for you. There you go. So the floodway is the primary flow path and has significant development restrictions. You can generally think of it as the no-build zone. There is some development or movement of soil and things that you can do in the floodway, but generally speaking, it's the hands-off area. That's the center portion of what you see in that drawing there. The flood fringe is the portion of the floodplain that is outside the floodway and is the portion of floodplain where development is allowed to occur. And in fact, the floodway boundary is established by assuming that the entire flood fringe will eventually be filled. FEMA's flood insurance rate maps were developed to support the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP. Each home and business owner within a floodplain that is shown on the FERM is required to have flood insurance in order to get a federally-backed mortgage. Homeowners can't qualify for a flood insurance policy through the National Flood Insurance Program if the community that the structure is in doesn't participate in the program or isn't in good standing with the program. This used to be a much bigger deal than it is today because there are more private flood insurance programs being offered to people than there was even just a short number of years ago. But it's still something we need to be aware of. Albany does participate in the NFIP program and as such, our Development Code incorporates the minimum program requirements for developing in the 100-year floodplain. And as a reminder, the 100-year flood is a flood event that has a 1% chance of occurring in any given year. Communities are periodically required to update our codes to meet changing minimum requirements of the program. Albany's actually exceeded the minimum requirements. And our last significant overhaul of our floodplain code was back in 2010. As David said, the public hearing tonight is to consider removing one of the floodplain development criterions, specifically 6.11 Sub-3, which David read to you. And this only applies to filling and grading and excavating in the floodplain. And until recently, staff was under the impression that this was one of the minimum requirements of the flood insurance program. So I won't reread that to you, but when you take a look at that, I assume that your first reaction would be to think that it sounds like a good code requirement to have and you would wonder why we're talking about removing it. And I'll start by responding to that by saying that the problem isn't with the spirit or the intent of the code. The problem is that I don't believe it's practical to implement, especially as a land use criterion. And I'll discuss why that is specifically in a moment, but I need to get a little more history on the table to help provide some perspective. So back, I said, we went through the last major overhaul back in 2010. And back then, Public Works and Community Development were two separate departments. At the time, Community Development staff asked Public Works to review the draft code and Public Works staff at the time recommended that this criterion not be included in the Development Code. My memory is, is that Community Development staff at the time thought that it was a minimum requirement and so it ended up staying in. That's just my memory. The point of mentioning this is that the concern with this specific criterion goes back many years and it probably wouldn't have been proposed in the first place if we would have known that it wasn't a minimum requirement. When it came time to implement that new code, Community Development staff wanted our engineering staff to conduct the technical reviews for them on floodplain applications. Besides the fact that we don't typically hire and keep floodplain modeling specialists on staff, the criterion that we're talking about tonight is one of the main reasons why Public Works staff wouldn't do the reviews. Public Works staff knew that applying the criterion as envisioned was not practical and we weren't willing to have to come and defend our analysis of that in a contentious land use proceeding. As a result, this ended up being one of the items that gets shipped off to a third-party consultant for review. In practice, what happens is the property owner, in order to submit their application, they have to hire an engineer to do a calculation to show that they're trying, that they can meet this criterion. They submit it to the city. The city sends it out to a third-party consultant, a floodplain modeling specialist. The costs for that third-party review then get passed on to the applicant. One of KND Engineering, so local engineering firm's clients, was recently required to go through that process. KND expressed similar concerns to those raised by our engineering staff back in 2010 and expressed frustration that their client, a local church, must pay for the analysis and a third-party review that they didn't believe was meaningful or helpful. Staff agreed with them that the analysis was not meaningful, but we're not in the position of being able to waive Development Code criteria, so their client had to go through that process. Through that review process, we talked more with the city's current third-party reviewer. He too didn't feel that the analysis that can be completed was meaningful and expressed concern that we would be relying on him to defend an analysis if ever challenged through a land use process. The third-party reviewer went on to say that the criterion is not something that they typically see in other communities that they work in, which triggered us to contact the state to understand if it was truly a minimum program requirement. And as I already mentioned, it turned out that it is not a minimum program requirement. Once we knew all this, we started the process to remove the criteria. I asked Melissa to work with Dan Watson at KND throughout this process as I felt his testimony about impacts to property owners who want to fill, grade, or excavate on their property was important for the Planning Commission and the City Council to hear. Additionally, in the past, many councils have desired local engineering firm involvement in creation of, and review of technical requirements that the city might impose. And you'll see Dan's testimony provided in the record. All right, so that covers all the history and how we got to where we are. The technical challenges with this criterion, there's really two groups. The first is a lack of clarity in the criterion itself and the second is the numeric or procedural challenges with it. For the language itself, you can see where it talks about not increase existing velocities of flood flows, so it's not see this blah, blah, blah. So flood flows, what is meant by, I think she has a typo on there, that's why I was stammering. Flood area, okay, sorry. Last part of the sentence, of soils in the flood area. So flood area is not clear to me. That doesn't tell us whether we're supposed to look at impacts on the entire floodplain, neighboring property, the subject property, an area within the specific distance of the activity, or something else. The code doesn't say which way we're supposed to go with that, but the answers for each of those different areas is significantly different. Also, it's not clear on what velocity impacts are unacceptable. If the erosive velocities are already exceeded, can no development occur or does it not matter at that point? What tolerance is acceptable, is it 1 foot per second, a tenth of a foot per second, a thousandth of a foot per second? Don't know. In practice, as David said, the problem with this review criteria is that it requires a site-by-site analysis using tools and available data that are only applicable on a very large geographic scale. Analysis required to respond to the criterion implies a level of accuracy that just doesn't exist. We can complete, engineers can complete analyses and calculations to provide a response that will appear to the layperson to be accurate and meaningful. However, those that understand the tools and limits of the tools, the data and the calculations know that those results are a gross misrepresentation of what would likely It's important to remember that floodplain maps and supporting computer models were created for the purpose of operating a national flood insurance program, not for calculating soil erosivity as called for in the criterion. Further complicating things, in Albany, some floodplains are completely mapped, some of them aren't. Floodplain models, like the Willamette, are decades old and likely don't represent what would happen today if a flood were to occur. Large watersheds like the Willamette have models created to cover large geographic areas with regionally, not locally, based assumptions and present results with significant distances between published data intervals. On the Willamette in our area, it's about 3,000 feet between cross-sections that provide data for engineers to use. This means that in addition to concerns that we have about the overall accuracy of the data that is provided, it's only provided at a potential significant distance from individual properties that might have to complete this analysis. So you end up with a parcel of nominal size, having to use questionable watershed-level velocity data published for a location that might be 1,500 feet away and then estimate, to estimate those velocities on their property. And to assume that that velocity is accurate on an applicant's property, they require them to estimate that their development activities impact on that velocity and compare it to soil erosivity is not practical. Almost done. Beyond that, the published data, whether it is accurate or not at the time it was created, was a snapshot in time and it doesn't represent velocity impacts from all of the fill, grading, and excavation activities that have occurred over the last several decades. Doesn't make sense to build off that data for individual soil erosivity calculations on a site-by-site basis. In my opinion, during a flood, we are going to have erosion both naturally and that occurring as a result of fill, grading, and excavating in the floodplain. Whether we have this criterion or not, it's not going to be avoided, in just my opinion. Because of everything I covered, it's difficult for staff or applicants to defend the accuracy of such analysis. It's equally difficult for people opposed to fill, grading, and excavating activity to challenge such an application. We don't feel that the issues that are outlined tonight are practical to address by amending the current criteria based on the technical limitations resulting in low-value analyses, the unnecessary cost to applicants, and the likely inability to meaningfully defend or challenge the criteria. or challenge the criteria. Staff recommends that we remove this criteria from the development code.
Okay, any questions, staff?
I do. So could we have a picture back of floodway, floodplain, whichever it is?
There you go.
So the hatch part, you're saying, do I understand you correctly that you want to let people fill that in as much as they want without worrying about erosion of the bank?
You, your development code already allows all of that area, as long as the development code criteria are met. It allows you to fill that, you can, and your development code allows you to move that water around in that area, property to property, without having to evaluate the impacts.
It presently does that? And you don't worry at all about the velocity of the water flowing through there?
Your criteria right now does.
Does worry about velocity.
This criteria gets at that.
So our present criteria does worry about the velocity flowing through there?
It makes you look at soil velocity, but you could raise the depth of the water three feet on your neighbor's property, and our code would allow it. So would the flood insurance program. Doesn't, it doesn't.
So if that area gets filled, washes away, parts of it wash away, and houses are too close to the edge, cause a problem, I would think.
Yeah, as I said, the spirit and intent of the code, I think, is well-meaning and positive, but.
You feel it doesn't work at all?
I believe that it's not practical to implement.
You're saying it's an expensive thing for developers to do.
I am not, this might come out bad, but I'm not worried about the expense. In my personal opinion, if I thought we were getting meaningful results, and that we're going to be able to provide adequate, meaningful protections, or make better educated decisions based on what we would get out of that analysis, then I would say that the time and energy would be well-spent.
Okay.
I don't believe that we get that. I wouldn't have a problem with it personally at all, because I think the spirit and intent is sound, I just don't think we can deliver on that spirit and intent.
Yeah, a while back, I saw a picture in the paper, in the Corral and Solid Paper, that a road between here and Eugene, I think it was, where the river had a road in the bank, and the road was caving in. And I think that probably has to do with the velocity of the flow of the river at the point.
Sure it does.
So if we fill in that floodway, floodplain, whatever we call it, isn't that going to increase the velocity? If water's flowing through there at high water?
The velocity will increase, yeah, and that's expected and anticipated.
And if it's too high, it's going to erode back to whatever's behind the edge of the bank there. No, okay, and we don't, apparently don't care about that.
The challenge is, I mean, even when you think about how this water is going to move in, it's going to be different at every stage, right? It's going to be pushing and pulling itself around and responding to what the ground surface is doing.
Well, it's going to depend on how much water is trying to get down the channel.
That's exactly right. So you might have a 10-year flood event that might have higher velocities on a property in reality than happened during the 100-year event, because of the water depth and how it's responding and filling and draining in different places at different times. So it's, you know, it's much more complicated than.
Okay, yeah. And all the cities along the river here are getting rid of this?
I didn't do a, I didn't do a community by community comparison. We have our third-party consultant that we work with that had indicated this wasn't a review criteria that he typically sees in other communities, and I had been uncomfortable with it for almost 10 years now. And hearing that and knowing that it wasn't a minimum requirement, I started this process. It's all on me. If you don't like it, then you can blame me.
Well, I mean, it seems to me, we hear about floods and the problems they cause and the loss and all that other stuff.
Yeah, and you will have it.
It makes me worry about coming in floodways, not only erosion of the bank, what happens upstream? Does the river rise upstream if you fill the floodway downstream?
The floodway is established assuming that the river's going to rise one foot when the entire flood fringe is filled. So that's the water surface elevation gain that would be anticipated when the flood fringe is filled at some point. They looked only at two points in time when they're doing these things. You know, they looked at what it was on the Willamette, whatever it was, '79 or early '80s, and then what it would be when the entire floodplain, flood fringe is filled. And they look at those two points in time. They don't, they don't do anything about what might happen to properties in between those time periods. I mean, I think I've been, I don't.
I don't know if I understand enough about this to vote for it.
Bill?
So the proposed amendment is to remove this criteria, is that correct?
That's my proposal, yes.
Okay.
And does this apply to, say, our local creeks too, Periwinkle, Oak Creek?
This applies to everywhere where there's a mapped floodplain. So, or a designation, I forget what the designation is, Melissa would need to chime in on that. There's a specific map designation for when there's a floodway, but it's, a floodplain, but it's not mapped, and so if you're going to do something, you have to estimate where the boundary might be. So we have those all over town.
Any other questions, staff? Okay. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. Does anyone wish to testify on the proposed amendments? Okay, not seeing anyone. And does anyone have any procedural questions that they would like to raise at this time? Okay, with that, I will declare the public hearing closed at 7:52 PM. And Sean, would you like to read the first reading?
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text relating to floodplain management and adopting findings.
I'll make a motion to the ordinance to be read a second time, only.
Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text relating to floodplain management and adopting findings.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. A legislative decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following an adoption of an amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward to the Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted text and findings and notify the Department of any substantial changes which may have occurred in the proposal since any previous notification to the department. Okay, all right. Thank you, David. Thank you. Okay. That item is done, and now we're on 4B, and this is going to be over the proposed demolition at Fourth and Kalapuya. And so a question to this for council would be whether to postpone this for a hearing or proceed, and I'll let our city attorney explain the options you have.
Thank you, mayor. Just a little bit of background, kind of catch, to refresh people's memory of how we got to where we are tonight. As you may recall, September the 12th of last year, the city council called up this item on its own motion from the land, which was a decision from the Landmarks Commission. The city council then had a hearing on this, October the 10th, and recommended that the demolition permit be approved with conditions. The hearing that night on October 10th was closed, and at this point, or after that meeting, this was appealed to Luba. Luba came back and sent us back on a remand, identifying two issues that were, that needed to be addressed. One was that the findings that the staff had prepared, that the council had adopted, they said were not adequate enough to support the decision, and they needed to have different findings. Second was that one of the council members, Councilor Kellum, would be recused from this vote tonight. And so Mr. Kellum has, as you see, has left the dais, he's not part of the participating in this decision tonight, or in the deliberations. What you have before you tonight are findings that have been drafted, staff has gone over them, and believes that they adequately reflect the decision that was made on October the 10th, and have addressed the criteria that contained in both the Albany Development Code and the Oregon Administrative Rules. Tonight, you'll have, you have several options. One is you can adopt those findings as they are. Second, you could adopt them, but add additional conditions to them. And then finally, you could deny the request. Now, denying the request, and it has this on your sheet as well, was not one of the options at the original Landmarks Committee hearing, because the Albany Development Code does not provide for a complete denial of the application, but only a one-year stay. The second time that this was heard in front of the city council, the city council applied the Oregon Administrative Rule criteria, which does allow for an outright denial. Finally, tonight, I wanted to make clear, because there seemed to be a little bit of confusion, that the city council is not obligated tonight to make a decision. If the city council chooses to delay this and bring it up at a later time, they can do that. So if we have a vote tonight, four or more people vote to stay this or delay this until a different date, that can be done. So it's not an obligation, you're not mandated to make a decision tonight, and I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. And with that, I'm also happy to answer any other procedural questions that the staff may have. I want to point out that this is not a public hearing tonight. You've heard some stuff about notices weren't sent out in time pursuant to a statute that on a hearing, this is not a public hearing, new evidence will not be permitted tonight, you will not hear from the applicant tonight or their attorney, you won't hear from opponents tonight, there will be no new testimony, verbal or written. It's basically everything from the moment that the mayor hit the gavel on October the 10th of last year and closed the public hearing, that everything from that point backwards is the evidence that you should be considering tonight, and nothing that happened after the October 10th night. If you want to do that, we would need to re-advertise this as a new public hearing, have a new public hearing, and allow everybody to present new or the same evidence. So that's procedurally where we're at. And again, staff's here tonight, we've got David Martino and Laura LaRocque in the back. If there's any questions that staff, they can answer for anyone up on the dais, otherwise I'm also here, and Jeff is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, questions?
Do I get this right here, suggesting that it would be reasonable and perhaps smart to delay this to the next week?
Just, all I'm doing is just giving the options at this point, I'm not deciding one way or the other, right, yeah, so.
But that has been proposed, Madam Mayor, suggested to.
So, so council, then, what would you like to do? You can, you'd have to make a motion if you want to be able to delay the decision and add a later date, or open for more testimony, you're going to have to provide direction. So, Bill?
I'm going to make a motion to adopt the findings and approve the demolition of the three buildings as proposed in planning file H1-12-18. This motion is based on the information provided in the record and the findings and conclusions in support of this decision made by the city councils provided by attachment fee during deliberations on this matter. And I also want to say that my decision is not being influenced by anything that, any comments from Councilor Kellum?
Second.
All right.
I'd only comment that my decisions were not based on anything, Councilor Kellum, I didn't know him, I haven't talked to him, but since I've been on the council, and I had a meeting with him for lunch one time in the last six months. So, no, 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 no need.
I wanted, you just reminded me of one more thing I wanted to say, Council Johnson, and that was that tonight, you have in front of you the record, the stuff that had been provided to you prior to the October 10th decision, as well as the stuff that had been provided to you, as I think it was yesterday or the day before. It's testimony from both opponents and proponents of the proposal back on October the 10th, with exhibits that were attached and provided by both proponents and proponents. Everyone on the dais was at the meeting on October the 10th, and Councilor Johnson additionally has informed me that he has reviewed the materials again, and has viewed the material online since he was not acting as a city councillor on October the 10th. So, just wanted to clarify that.
Well, I'm curious, have you reviewed this packet also that we just got on the dais tonight?
That's, I read for a living. I've read every 300, every 300 pages, 340-page document.
You read through it all?
Every one of them. I slept until 5 o'clock this morning reading.
That was emailed out earlier in the week, too.
No, but I read the one before, and I read this stuff to Peterson later on in the evening.
I planned to vote no on this, and the reason being that we have a wide, we have 200, 200-some pages in the original agenda. And then this was supplied to us in the middle of the day yesterday, and it's review of old stuff, of course, but it's nice to be able to review it. But then there's a bunch of new stuff that's come to light. And I would think it would make sense, when we're talking about a historic resource here in our town, it's a house, and a couple of, interestingly enough, auxiliary houses in fact, essentially auxiliary dwelling units next to it, that Dr. Leslie Hill apparently fixed up the house on the corner, 331, and moved in those other smaller houses in the middle of the block. And his daughter then lived there, starting, he willed, I don't think he willed them to, he sold them to her for a dollar in about 1905. And apparently, she lived happily ever after for her in that house and with the rental houses next door. And since then, they, of course, like so many old houses, have changed hands, and that part of town, when we moved here in 1966, some of us may recall, we called it Hobartsville. The speculators had bought a good share of those houses, and they were on that downward trend that some of you really seem to appreciate, it's kind of a nice thing. In fact, the Hobarts had the Monteith House, and at one point, offered the city the Monteith House, and hey, I was on the council at the time, 1972 or '73, I think it was late '72. And we said, great, we'll take it. Well, they said, you've got to take the house and move it someplace, because we want to build a parking lot on the block. Well, we eventually bought the Monteith House, and it's been fixed up, and is now considered a really excellent example of a pioneer house here in Oregon. Now, the house we're talking about now, 1858, and the Monteith House was finished, we think, in 1852, it's only six or seven, maybe eight years newer than the Monteith House. So is it actually an antique house from the period? You know, 1858, that's nine years, 10 or 11 years prior to our city being incorporated as a city. It even beat statehood in 1859. That house was there when this was just a territory. And, well, is it not too fancy? No, it's not too fancy. I don't think hardly any of the houses in this area were very fancy at that period. But is it a good example of houses of that period? Some people think it. Some people think it is. I think it, I think it is, and I think it could be an even far better example if some of the remodeling features, yeah, be removed. For instance, the front porch, which is reminiscent of the 1920s. And, um, oh, some people's, well, first owners, it's not, not, not feasible financial way to do that. It's going to take at least $350,000 to fix up that house. He provided us with a list of the stuff that needed to be done. And some of us looked at it, and we saw polished granite countertops and a really pretty fancy, plumbing fixtures, not the pipes, but the faucets and so forth. And we felt that that was really not a very fair estimate of what it would cost to restore those houses to usable condition. So, um, I think a combination of destroying a, a, a example of a typical pioneer house at the time, and a really, really faulty information in the, leading up to the, I don't, I can't blame the, whoever wrote up the staff report. They took the information that, that the staff apparently says, we have to use this information. We can't use new information because we can't have a new public hearing. Well, I think that is extremely unfortunate. And, uh, those who are in favor of demolishing the house say, well, it's not a good example. It's not, it's not fancy enough. It may be old enough, but we don't have exact documentation, documentation that Dr. Hill did indeed live there and did indeed deed it to his, his daughter. And by the way, who was Dr. Hill? Well, he had a museum here, and he's really a pretty interesting guy. Not only Dr. Lester Hill, but his father, Dr. John Hill before him. And I see this house as kind of a, a, well, not really a monument, but an indication that, a reminder of Dr. Hill and his people. And when it comes to restoration of things, I think of this house as a kind of a model, if you're interested, if you're into old cars, some people like to, if they got the wherewithal to do it. They love Auburns, they love Duesenberg's, Cadillacs are great. I like Buicks myself, they're kind of middle class. But one of the, over the years, one of the really popular cars is the Model A Ford. And during the time when I was a teenager, Model A Fords were, when was I a teenager? Teenager, in the 50s, I guess, Model A Fords were about 20 years old. They were all of them.
Let's stick to the house. Let's stick to the house.
Yeah. Well, I want to use it as an example. Model A Fords are popular with car people because they're easy to restore, because Henry was a genius in making a really usable product that was a simple design and a really tough design. And by the way, attractive to most people. It's not a Cadillac, it's not a, not a Duesenberg, but to most people, it's a really attractive automobile when it's fixed up. So, I hope, I hope you can see the value of this house and join me in voting no to the demolition of it. And my understanding is if we, if we vote yes to the demolition, crack it on, it will be down. So, and I think that is really unfortunate.
So clarification, Bill, on your motion, was it for basing off the 90-day wait? That was last October, or for the whole year's stay, which would be July 9?
Well, I'll defer to, I'll defer to council, but I believe it would be effective immediately.
You, you would have the option to make it effective immediately or to delay it if you wanted to to the night, so you can, you can add to your motion.
So I would amend my motion to make it effective immediately, but I also want to clarify, when I refer to the planning file, which is HI dash 12 dash 18, I may have referred to as H1. I just want to clarify, it's, it's HI. And I would ask the second to approve those amendments as well.
Is that okay with the second for changing that amendment?
Yes.
So that means it would be, the house would be demolished immediately then? That's what you want?
Yes.
Well, the motion's effective immediately. That has no bearing on whether it would be demolished. That's up to the owner.
Right. The authority, you're giving authorization.
Right.
Okay, any more discussion on this motion? Which is very disappointing to me. I just, I'll say one last thing. I just wish that it was, sort of reminds me of what we see a lot of our national politics to, our state politics, what's going on right now when you have folks on both sides very polarized. This is the same thing. We've had compassionate people trying to be able to save the house, and I feel like no one was wanting, nobody was coming towards the middle. It was just everyone, you know, digging their heels in the sand and not trying to work to be able to come up with a, um, kind of an agreement between both sides. And it's really unfortunate that that is, this is what takes place. Because it's not the houses' fault that they were neglected. It's not their fault, someone's wanting to tear them down. It's just, it's very unfortunate this is the outcome, so. Okay, with that, you have a motion, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right. Um, next, that takes care of that report. Next is business from the public. Is there anyone that would like to bring an item forward to the city? Yes, Jeff?
Let me turn my phone back on.
And if you can state your name and spell your last name and your address, please.
My name is Jeff Esakker, out of 320 Washington Street, in Albany here. And my last name's spelled H-E-E-S-A-C-K-E-R. And still coming on the phone. The main thing is, is, um, let me get it right, up here. I've had an application, it's called Nextdoor, um, on my phone. And I was kind of shocked when I saw a letter, an open letter from, from a, of, say, a city person or city personnel. And, and let me read that to you and to the, the people, let me get it up so I can do that.
Before you read that, can you give us a little context? Was it something somebody posted online?
Yeah, it was somebody that, it was, it was a city, a city employee that put this online, and I kind of, kind of disturbed about it a little bit. And it says, reminder, we cannot see what we can see and cannot see on Nextdoor. It says, neighbors, I want to take a minute to remind you, to, excuse me, I want to take a minute to remind you that, that as a public agency on Nextdoor, the city of Albany cannot see your replies, or can see your replies to our post as, as well as private messages you send to us. But we cannot, but we cannot see conversations you and your neighbors are having on Nextdoor sites. That's where I'm having the issue of it is, is why should the government, see, this is being saying, as, as a public official, should be seeing our posts, what we want to post? If we're posting it between neighbors, that's our, that's the private business between us neighbors. It's not between the, the, the person at the government, because the person at the government says something, sees something, says something, does something, has to report that, as everybody else knows. See, say something, do something. That's what everybody's encouraging. But if somebody doesn't want to do that in the public at large, well, then that's, that's their business. It's not the business of the government to intercede, to, to want to see what our private conversations are between the people at large. Now, I can understand if you open yourself up to the public, or you open yourself up to the, to the government. That's between you and the government. If the neighbor says, well, he does the same thing, he opens himself up to the government, well, then that's a private conversation between him and the government. Not worth saying, as well as we can see, we want, that says, we cannot see conversations between you and your neighbors. Why would somebody would say that, I would not know. Because it's, it's ridiculous because of that thing is, is that they're wanting to see what the other two people are seeing, the government is.
You might be taking a little bit.
I may be taking it out of context a little bit, but the other hand is, it says, we cannot see those conversations between the two individuals out there. We can see them between you and me, but not the, not the two people out in the public. That's what I'm saying, is that's where the boundary lies, is that why should the government see or ascertain anything that the other people are saying outside of the private conversations between?
Unless somebody wanted, you know, wanted the city to see something, but then they were able, they're not able to see it. So I don't know the specifics to it or what was.
Well, I can kind of get at a specific here, is, okay, let's say, um, since I'm a member of the public, and my Nextdoor neighbor said, you know, you know, I was talking to the other neighbor, and he's saying, well, you know, that guy back over there, he's a, he's a hoarder. And, oh, I said, oh, okay. I would say, oh, okay, well, that, and it's for me to, to, to know about that. And if I go and investigate, well, then that's my business between them. But then if somebody overheard us two talking and saying, well, these two people talked about this person being hoarder, and then reported it to the agency, the agency would have to go in and investigate that person being a hoarder. Now that could, could well very be going into liability issues.
That's what the city manager.
You see, you see what I'm saying?
I do, Jeff, and I think you've made several faulty assumptions and misunderstood that post. What that post was meant to say was that Nextdoor, as a social media application, doesn't allow governments to see conversations between the community members, okay? Because they want conversations to be between neighbors. So if you're having a conversation with your neighbor and you think that the city can see it, they can't.
Yeah.
So if you have something, if you have, if you have something that's important, that simply served as a reminder to you to, to contact the city. It was in no way any reference to anybody's intention to come between neighbors or to surveil neighbor conversations. Simply a reminder.
Well, I can say on the surface that, yeah, that's, there's, there's two ways down every two.
No, there's only one way to read that. You can't, if you read that again, I don't think anybody can really, it's quite a stretch to think that, um, that means that the city says that they want to, they want to get between neighbors' conversations. It's, it's not the case at all.
I interpreted it that way. Maybe some, maybe my interpretation, it may be other people's, but when I read it on the surface, as, as the way it said, it's saying that the government, whoops, sorry about that, that can see, that they want to see what those two people are talking about.
No, it says we can't see.
I know, they said they can't see it.
It doesn't say we want to see.
That, that they, no.
It doesn't say that at all.
Yeah.
So is this an app the city has?
This is, this is an application, Nextdoor is a common application that neighbors can have.
Doesn't involve the city.
No, no, we can, we can create an account, but it doesn't involve the city. It's not a city application.
Well, why did you get the notification, man?
It's a private company.
As Jorge says, we have an account, just like we have a Twitter account and a Facebook account, okay? And we use that to communicate street closures, boiled water notices, all kinds of public information that's very important for people to have. However, if they then say that there's a, you know, I don't know, a problem in a stream, and they're talking to their neighbors, they can't assume that the city then sees that. They have to get to the city and communicate that to the city, because we're not allowed to see that by Nextdoor itself, which runs the application.
Nextdoor sends it to everybody but the city?
If you sign up for an account with Nextdoor in your neighborhood, you'll be able to communicate with your neighbors and you'll be able to see, it's like a electronic bulletin board, you can exchange messages.
If I send it to Joel Blow and, and the rest of the neighborhood?
Right.
It doesn't come to the city.
You can send, well, you can send us a message directly to a person, but if you want somebody like, for me, I, I give away aluminum cans to kids for, for school stuff. I have aluminum cans, and somebody will chime up and say, I'll come and get them. So public stuff like that. Now, if I want to directly talk to council, former council, Kupczynski, I can send him directly a message in that same app.
So I don't think Nextdoor, I can't send it to a specific?
Yes, that's what I said, you can send it to a specific person.
Yeah, that's what I agree, going to a specific person. But when, when it went where I thought it went, is the government want to, to?
No.
To actually say, well, what's going on between these two people? Or, or what could potentially?
I think you took the intent there, you know, and it's the wrong intent.
I'm sorry, I may have picked, like I said, you know, I haven't taken it the way I, I see it, and sometimes, you know, intent could be comprised with a couple of different things.
Be assured that wasn't the intent, so, yeah. So rest assured on that, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Um, anyone else from business from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Joel Orton. I at, live at 1930 Lyon Street Southwest. And I'll, I'll start by saying I'm just very disheartened by your decision tonight to approve the demolition. I think it's a perfect example of demolition by neglect. And, you know, why these houses were allowed to get to the state over the 20 or 30 years, I don't understand. And I would ask that the city take the appropriate steps to avoid this happening in the future, particularly for districts that are on the National Historic Register. So I'm sure there are some laws, some regulations in place, maybe you're just not acting on them, but I hope that this doesn't occur in the future. Thank you.
I agree, I agree. Thank you, thank you, Joel. Anyone else from business of the public? Okay, all right, thank you, folks. Um, next, before we get to the first reading of ordinance, let's drop down to E3, so we don't have to delay our district attorney sitting in the back patiently for us, though. So, Mr. Martini, would you like to update us on the deadly physical force plan for Lynn County?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. This would be on page 291, starts on 290. The old one would be 230.
Councilmembers, Doug Martini, the district attorney for Lynn County. Annually, the Deadly Physical Force Planning Committee meets. It is made up of members from law enforcement, the public, as well as police unions, representatives. We review our procedures with regards to how do we respond to a incident where deadly physical force is used by a police officer? And we looked at our plan, and we wanted to update a few things. We were making reference to the Senate bill that had passed, Senate Bill 111. Well, an Oregon v. statute number has been attached, so we updated the citations. We felt that some of the titles or headings for sections were not terribly descriptive or appropriately descriptive, so we, we updated those. And we, for example, in one of the, we did some rearranging, for example, in one of the places, we have definitions that actually weren't in alphabetical order, they are now in alphabetical order. So no substantive changes were made to it, but some cosmetic things were done to make it more user-friendly. And so that came before the planning committee, and so on behalf of the planning committee, respectfully approved, asked for approval of the updates to the plan.
Okay, all right, any questions over the plan? Any of, for them, changes?
Well, I didn't see anything in here on sections. Well, I didn't see anything in here on section seven, investigation protocols, on, uh, camera, body camera video, or anything like that.
Correct. Uh, we have had discussions on body cameras, and some, some of our jurisdictions have them, some don't. Uh, we're dealing with multiple police agencies, and so, uh, we have allowed wide berth for the investigating agency to be able to, uh, as part of their investigation, to make decisions on how to, uh, use those body cams as part of their investigation. In some instances, uh, you may allow the police officer to view them ahead of time. Uh, in other instances, you don't want that. And so we're allowing the investigating agency to make that specific decision.
I think it should be part of the protocol, because nationally, it affects my people a great deal. And they shouldn't have the option to not use their body cam video. That makes no sense. If it's available resource, the city is paying for, the county jurisdiction's paying for, why wouldn't you want to use that video?
Right. Well, we would certainly be using it as part of the investigation to look at things. Is your question with regards to whether you would show it to the police officer before his interview, is that a question?
No, I mean, is it going to be made available to the public after, during investigation?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We, we have had, uh, we had a deadly force incident, thankfully, a person did not die, uh, that was captured, not on a body cam, but it was captured on a, uh, video at the convenience store. And we very quickly renewed, released it all to the public, so.
Okay, other questions? All right, there is a resolution on, um, page 292, or 230 in your old pack, original packet.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all aye. Thank you so much. Okay, let's now go back up to, um, let's see, this would be an ordinance on, um, page 274 on the old packet, would be 213 or 214, so. Um, and this is approving financing of system development charges for property described as tax lot 00801. Would you like to do a first reading?
An ordinance to levy assessments against property specifically benefited by sewer and water connection, and the assessment of sewer, water, parks, and transportation system, oops, sorry, system development charges for property described as tax lot 00801 of the parcel 11S03W17BC, and site address 2614 Gary Street Southeast, and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion, the orders be read a second time, if I will.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance to levy assessments against property specifically benefited by sewer and water connections, and the assessment of waters, sewer, water, parks, and transportation system development charges for properties described as tax lot 00801 of the parcel 11S03W17BC, and site address 2614 Gary Street Southeast, and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Question?
Yep.
I'm presuming, I hope correctly, that the reason there's an emergency here is something failed, and this is getting the people back in business?
Well, no, this is, this is to allow them to get their business done as quick as possible.
Right, right. It's, system has failed, and we want to get, yeah, okay, got you.
No, this prob, oh, this one, no, they have subdivided that lot. They're selling it for a house, for this location is on Gary Street. They kind of, somebody redid the original house and then put a flagpole in the back.
So it wasn't really that much of an emergency?
Well, if they're wanting to sell it, yeah. They want to, it's, it's got a for-sale sign on it, a for-sale.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, adoption of the resolution. This one is, um, on page 279. The old packet would be 218, and this would be the Crocker Lane Local Improvement District. This is for abandoning a, um, LID. And is there a report on this? Staff have anything to say, or?
There wasn't, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions or a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution which abandons the LID?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. This was one that we were glad that this was abandoned.
We were targeted at that one.
Yes, that was a pretty contentious issue that we went through, quite a few meetings, and I think it was packed in, in the council chambers when we had that LID. That's why we always said, LIDs are very ugly to go through, so we like to avoid them. Um, next, this is going to be for new pickleball courts, and this has got a resolution on page 284 or 223.
You thought you were done with Ed Hodney.
Oh, and here comes Ed.
Last one, I promise you.
You get to retire knowing you finally got some more pickleball courts.
All right, very briefly, just, just wanted to remind you that we last spoke about this particular project on May 20th, at which point the council authorized a memorandum of understanding, uh, with the, with the direction that we would develop an IGA, intergovernmental agreement, which is more the legal contractual relationship between LBCC and the City of Albany to build these courts on LBCC property. And that's what's before you tonight. If you authorize the execution of the IGA that's in your packet, um, the next step will be to quickly finish the design work, put the project out for bid, and get the project built as quickly as we can. And, um, I guess my final note on this is, this is how the city, uh, without a dedication of specific funding sources for parks, projects, needs to go about doing business, and that's through partnerships. And we've achieved a number of partnerships with other entities in the city over the last several years, Boys and Girls Club, School District in particular. This is how we do things in Albany, without a bond issue for parks. Uh, it's effective, uh, as long as the city council is supportive of this, this particular strategy. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? All right, and you do have a resolution in front of you.
Move with adoption of the resolution.
Same.
Okay, any more discussion? Any, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, thank you, Ed. Um, next, on the back page is adoption of the consent calendar, and staff would like to have item number three pulled off. If there isn't any other items that need to be pulled off for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
A move for adoption of the consent calendar, with the exception of item number three.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, item number three.
All right, so, uh, obviously discussions with the developers, uh, out there is going really well. Uh, reason wanted it pulled is because we are obviously seeking council approval to authorize Peter to enter into this agreement. Uh, what we would like to do is to also get approval to have the flexibility to change, uh, the type of financial assurance. So not change the terms of the agreement, but we have a completion bond written in there. Uh, the development group might like to use an escrow account, uh, in lieu of that. So we just want to make sure you're, you're okay with that. It's another form of standard financial assurance that we typically work with. We, we don't really have any concerns with it. Uh, and then we, the only other thing that, that, uh, that's still hanging out there is they would like us to incorporate, uh, some sort of statement into the agreement that identifies that when this is done, uh, the petitions and waivers that have been applied to people's properties for construction of the bridge have been satisfied. What they want is they want something to point to in the agreement to, to show to the people who are buying their lots to say, look, you don't have to worry about that document anymore. We've entered into this agreement, we're on the hook for it, and we're meeting that requirement. Uh, so we're, we're asking tonight for, uh, permission to execute that agreement, uh, with some flexibility to address those two terms. We'll come back, uh, once, once it's fully executed, uh, beginning of next month, and then you can take action on the resolution for the LID, which will, uh, hopefully be to not form it, based on having this executed at that time.
So, question, I'm familiar with a bid bond or a performance bond, but you didn't use any of those terms, in lieu of an escrow account?
Completion bond is what we had written in there.
Would that be similar to a performance bond?
It's, it's, uh, it's similar in that it's the same, it's the same form of assurance, but it's for a different purpose. It's for completion versus performance.
Well, but, my experience is with a performance bond, if, let's say, a company goes back bankrupt, then you've got the company that issued that bond will go out and hire another contractor to finish the job.
Yeah, I'll have to let Sean describe the differences. I know, we used to use one interchangeably, and Jim had us change that practice, because there's a specific nuance between the two.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you giving me that opportunity, Jeff. So there is a difference, uh, and I researched this in the past, and, because staff had a question on it, but I wasn't anticipating this question tonight, so I, I cannot remember the exact nuance between the two. There is a difference, but they are substantially similar in, in nature. Um, but in this case, we're not using the completion bond. Now, I think you're saying you're just going to put, uh, money in escrow.
They've requested, uh, for us to consider an escrow.
So no bond at all would be in this one, and just be money in an escrow account?
They'll put cash, full amount, in an escrow account.
Right.
Well, I have a problem with that, because how much money are they going to put in escrow?
The full amount.
The full amount?
Yeah.
As long as everything doesn't have any cost to it.
Yeah, I guess I'm surprised they'd want to do that, I mean-
I think it's because they have multiple parties putting cash in, it probably made bonding more difficult. I don't, I don't know. Uh, we also have written into our agreement, we also have written into our agreement that if, that if there are overruns, they're responsible for them, and there's a method describing how to go after that. So we're, we're covered in that case.
Well, as my dad used to say, if you're happy, I'm thrilled to death.
There are variations to that.
Counsel, what would you like to do with this item?
So, I, I don't have a problem with giving staff the liability, I'm sorry, the flexibility to work with the developers. Uh, we need that in the form of a motion, or is that just a, a general understanding, or?
This is the, yeah, the move to approve it.
I'll second that.
Mm-hmm.
All thirty.
Okay, motions are made to approve in a second, and that would be the understanding for having staff have that flexibility.
Capture that, I'll send that.
Okay, any more discussion?
Kind of a general discussion, more than a motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, that's it for business, and business from the council. Bessie?
I've been thinking, after, when I was gone and listening to the different councilmates and the, but, watching the budget things, we have the budget, got to supplement the budget, but there are so many questions and ideas that the different counselors have, staff has, um, we've discussed that we need more revenue, don't know how to do it. I believe that we need to start, like, right away, in discussing some of the stuff, putting things out on the table, not waiting until November, December, or whatever, then all of a sudden we can't do anything about it. You know, uh, like, I use the example of Maple Lawn. We had no idea that it was going to be on the table, that maybe we might do away with it. There wasn't enough time, to be fair to the school, and also not fair to us, like, we're the ones taking the guff, like, you're going to do what? And so, if we can do, start doing something right away, and I know, Peter, you, you know, you've talked with us all individually, and you probably have plans, but I just think where we're in, we're kind of in dire straits, and, and we need to start thinking and talking about these things, rather than, well, I'm thinking of this, I'm thinking of that, you know, the library, the parks, this, everything.
It's on the calendar for July 22nd, and a work session to talk about as many of those possibilities as we've come up with, and then to get council direction on which of those they want us to further investigate.
Yeah, because I don't think we're going to get it done in one work session. That's my point. I, you know, you can't think of everything. Sometimes somebody comes up with something, and then you think, oh, yeah, that's a good idea, but maybe we should do this. So, um, as long as it's a continuing, um, process, I think it'll be in our best interest. And so, that's all.
Okay, all right, Bill?
Nothing, thank you.
Dick?
No, thanks.
Okay, Rich?
I have a couple things. I was late today. We had a little bit of rainstorm, and it blew a door open and put a couple inches of water in my warehouse, in the back. And I ended taking forty-two welding machines out of cardboard boxes so they would dry out. It was a little intense, but, you know, kind of like what you get on the Gulf Coast when it rains hard. The other thing is, we have Peter's evaluation in process. And I have objected to writing down issues in the past. I, I do again. Be happy to, when we go into executive session and talk about them, I'd be, be happy to talk about any, anything that there may be. But, to my way of thinking, you don't, you don't publicly talk about things that are concerns until there's a problem about it. Uh, and that's a problem that the seven of us would have with it, or the majority of us, not necessarily one of us. Um, I don't, to my way of thinking, it's not professional to do that in public, uh, until we've talked about it. And when you write it down, you're doing it in public, even if you say, I'm not going to talk about it, because anybody can do it for you, and then it is public.
So I was going to ask, and I totally forgot about it on Monday, because Peter and I had talked about this, whether you wanted to have his evaluation in open session or in executive session. So, you know, for many years, we did it, um, in open session with, with, when Wes Hare was here, and, and we did it with Peter's first year, uh, first year, and then, or was it last year then, the council, you decided you wanted to move it to an executive session. So, um, it's up to you what you would like to do, um, have it in open or executive session.
Well, I think the discussion you have in executive session, and if we agree that there is something that, that somebody needs to work on, then we announce what that is. Uh, if, after the, but not the detail. I mean, I'm, I think we're probably all pretty happy with Peter's performance. Uh, and, you know, there are things, and we, he talks to us a lot more than, than Wes did. Um, or at least he talks to me more than Wes talked to me. You're making a face.
Well, no, I agree with you, same thing, but he talks to us, I just hear.
But, anyway, um, I, I would say, let's, let's do the, the making of the sausage in, in executive session, and then if there is an announcement of a new kind of sausage, let's have that, uh, done in public.
So, the only question I have about the whole thing is, is that, does the public have an opportunity to provide feedback? And the reason I ask that is because the public pays a salary.
Um, when it comes to the, I mean, knowing that the evaluation is coming up, the public has the right to let any one of you know, any one of us know.
Okay, that's what I mean, that's what I mean. I haven't heard anything, so, so the public did have something, they would shoot it to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, before we made any changes to, to what we're doing, not going around and buy city attorney as well as the HR department. I mean, when you're dealing with public, are we dealing, dealing with an employee relations?
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is, if the public wanted to give feedback, they could do it through her council, basically, but she's, okay, that's all I need.
Well, the, the local paper and others have, have objected in the past, and what I told, uh, Mr. McAnally is, when I see his, um, his evaluation on, in the paper, I will believe he wants to have everybody's stuff out in the open. Business doesn't do it that way. do it that way, so I don't think we should.
And just as a reminder, that, that is a, a topic that's appropriate for an executive session unless, uh, the city manager requests it be in an open hearing. So it's, it's your option, unless he asks for it to be in an open hearing, then it would need to be in an open hearing, so.
What would you prefer, Peter?
I'll defer to the council's desire.
What would you like, counsel, to do?
Executive session.
Executive session.
As I said earlier, when it comes to, uh, employee relations, or his boss, I mean, that's, that's between us and Peter. I would want to be treated the same way in any other business I work for.
Yep.
I agree.
All right, so when we do have that, when is that on the agenda?
July eighth.
July eighth, okay. So our next work session, then, so that'll be set aside for executive session on that, so. Okay, all right, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Alex?
Yeah, I'll be, there's an all-star football game for high school players on Saturday. I'll be umpiring the first, refereeing the first game. So if you guys would come out and get entertained and laugh at me and yell at me, come on out, Saturday, South Albany High School.
You're blind, what are you doing?
They know that.
Like anything, okay? And I didn't have anything this evening, so Peter?
Just, uh, your, uh, agenda says that the next meeting dates are Monday, July eighth, and Wednesday, July tenth, but, uh, there was only one item on the tenth, so we took that item and moved it to the eighth, and so you have the tenth off, so there's no meeting on Monday, July tenth.
Day night.
So what, what time is the, is the hoop-dee-doo tomorrow?
Hoop-dee-doo tomorrow.
Oh, uh, Mr. Hodney's, uh, retirement at three o'clock.
Yeah, okay. So, being that is July tenth, just in case something else comes up that, should we just still keep it as a placeholder in case there's some items that come forward? We never know, it seems like there's always some, but, okay. Um, anything else? Staff have anything else? So, okay. Um, then our next meeting would be July eighth, and everybody have a good Fourth of July, and don't forget, we have our first concert on July fourth and fireworks. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.